I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we're beginning the meeting, what you might have heard, one of our board members is on the phone, so I'll have to keep referring to her to make sure we know when she votes back and forth. If you notice I'm forgetting her, somebody signal me and I'll remember she's on the phone again. At this time, favorite part of our meeting is the recognition of one of our elementary students, this time from Oswego Gachi Elementary, so I'd like to invite Mr. Macrina, and I have another board member who will also join me.
Good evening, everybody. This is my friend Evan Papadopoulos, a sharp guy inside and out, and he is Oswego Gachi's Waterford wonder this time around. It's my honor to recognize Evan Papadopoulos for his leadership, kindness, and academic commitment. Evan is a true role model, balancing his many talents with a heart for service. He is not only a state champion wrestler, so watch out, he also trains in jujitsu and brings the same discipline and determination into the classroom. At school, Evan serves as a kindergarten helper, showing patience and compassion with our youngest learners, and beyond school, he serves his faith community as an altar server at St. Sophia, demonstrating the values of responsibility and respect. He is looking ahead to the future. He wants to become an accountant because of his love of math, that's what he told me at least the other decade. And in his free time, he dreams big. When I ask him, what does he want to do in the future? He wants to stop all wars, a goal that reflects the kindness and empathy he carries with him each day. And he's supported by one of our amazing teachers, Emily Cheney, who states, Evan is a kind, hardworking, and helpful fifth grader who always gives his best. He's the kind of student who makes our classroom a better place just by being in it. Evan is always ready to lend a hand to his classmates and teachers, and his big smile can brighten anyone's day. He shows respect, stays positive, and sets a great example for others. We are so proud of him, and he truly deserves his award. And of course, behind every great student is a supportive family. I've known the Papadopolis is for a very long time, and I'd like to congratulate them on their commitment, encouragement, and love, which have clearly helped Evan grow into the outstanding man we are celebrating today. So thank you, mom, dad, and brother, and grandparents, who are wonderful people. Evan, your strength, compassion, and commitment shine in everything that you do. We are proud of all that you achieved. Never let that fire out. You're going to change the world, buddy, I guarantee you. All right, congratulations. Humble as well. Come on, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again, Evan. At this time, I will open it up to public comment. Also, I know we did have one written comment that was submitted by the Faulkner family. And right now, if there's anyone here who would like to do, take a few minutes for public comment, it's your turn.
Well, I'm the Faulkner family.
You're the Faulkner family, yes.
So I can, can I read?
I'll just, I forgot the reminder of three minutes.
Yeah, okay.
You got it.
Okay, on April 24th this year, Abigail Faulkner, my daughter, spoke to the Waterford Board of Education regarding the lack of policy regarding after-school activities and resident students who attend other public schools of choice. She requested that you provide one or make one in the future. After the meeting, more than one member came up to support her cause, and no one debated our point. At this point in time, there has been no proactive action by the board members that were at that meeting. Putting aside the emotional part of this story, the behavior of the Board of Education has fallen far short of professional. The only communication about our concerns has been initiated by Abigail. To make things worse, her attempts were ignored. For example, Abigail emailed all members and received no responses. Pause for a moment and let that sink in. A child tries to express their concerns to elected officials at a meeting, follows up, and then is ignored. The message she has received is that this system doesn't work. No one cared. You are not important. That's why she's not writing this letter, and she's not saying this. Since we have no written record of what was said on that day, I'll just recount it quickly here. Abigail attends the Marine Science Magnet High School. She chose that because she has a passion for diversity and equity, and she knows that magnet schools are designed to attract students from different backgrounds, and she liked that idea. She had participated in drama at Oswego Gachi Elementary School, and however, COVID eliminated any participation in middle school. A friend said that Waterford High School was putting on production of Mean Girls, and she should try out. They don't have a drama program at her school, so we called and asked, can she participate? And the answer was yes. We called the high school, we don't know who it was. We also did check to see if there was a policy and we couldn't find them, because we did not want to break any rules. After, she was happy. She was in Mean Girls, Heidi Chronicles, she was happy, she was making friends. Was she still in contact with some of them? After participating in tryouts for her third production, the director just told her that she's no longer allowed. This is cruel, and the board has done nothing about it. And its lack of a policy caused it. In fact, since there's no policy, what is preventing her from being around? So this situation is what we presented to the board, which was subsequently ignored. As there's no policy to prevent her from participating, this leads me to wonder, what's the lack of, what's for the lack of response from the board? There's no financial cost to it. She was not taking a spot. The director said he needed more actors, and Abigail offered, and she said, she was told no. Is it because the arts are not important? Sports, it's very clear. They want their players even though they go to another school. That's very clear. Is it easy to ignore a kid? Is the board angry because one of its students went to another school? If any of these questions offend you as a board member, please step back and take a look at it from our point of view. I hope this time someone offers her an answer instead of ignoring her. And I provided her contact information. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Yes.
So I just want to express how much this has impacted my daughter. She cries constantly about it. It is heartbreaking. Theater is what she loves. It is her incredible passion, and it was completely just pulled underneath her. I've asked, I called the high school, I talked with Chris Landry. His answer was, you can come back to the high school. That's how you can do it. I talked with, emailed the superintendent. He said, this is the Board of Education. This is something that has to be resolved by Board of Education. Abby came to the meeting, Christopher came to the meeting, spoke, tears, crying. No response. We waited, waited, waited. The spring musical came, auditions. She went and supported her friends, and her friends backed her up completely. Everybody that we talked to, even the first selection, it's like, what is going on? Why? This doesn't make sense. And I agree. And I have not stepped forward at all. I've kind of let my daughter take the lead because she's a senior in high school now, and I want her to start stepping up and taking that leadership role to make change that is in the world. That's what colleges want. And that's what she's writing her college essay about, this entire experience, and how she is going to be a change maker for what is right. It's not okay. My son was able to come over here, play cross country. My daughter did not have theater. I don't understand. I really don't. I'm an art teacher. The arts are incredible. It was well celebrated at Oswego Gachi, from kindergarten up to fifth grade. She had an incredible time, and is what she wanted to do. In fact, if you speak to any of her teachers, or Mr. Macrina, who's performed with her on stage, she belongs on stage. That's her entire world. She's going to continue to do it in high school, but in college. And it's heartbreaking as a mother to see your daughter so crushed. She's gained weight. It's been incredibly anxiety-producing. I can't even tell you, anxiety-producing, and a little bit of depression as well, because now she just sits in her room. And it's heartbreaking. I hope you guys make, I don't know why, we never heard anything, and that fumes me as a mom. And I'm sure if you have children, and if your child was just pulled out of a club sport, something that they're so passionate about, and you were given absolutely no reason, I just hope you have the heart to stop and think about that. Because, I mean, now we have her enrolled somewhere else, where we're paying for her to at least do theater. And they were kind. We told them our situation. But we're driving, she's driving a half an hour to go there to participate. She would really have loved to spend with her Waterford friends and family, because it was incredible experience for her. She was relieved last year before she was pulled out. I don't have anything to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a public comment? One more time, anyone else have a public comment? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, if you have a motion, please.
I move that the Waterford Board of Education approves the minutes from August 28th, 2025, regular meeting, and the monthly expenditure reports for August 2025.
Second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abanda?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to reading and review of respondents. Nothing else?
I have nothing to report.
And superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. As we know, we're up and running, but there's still some residual work from the summer, or business from the summer, which is our annual Summer Academy and Extended School Year report. Our two esteemed co-directors are here, Chris Dischordia and Joe Macrina, so I'll hand it off to you gentlemen.
We get the clicker?
You do. Free of charge.
All right, so I'd like to thank the board and the town for allowing us this opportunity to support our students during the summer, who needed a little shot in the arm to get them through, to maintain their momentum throughout the year. So we're going to talk about My Numbers, their Summer Academy and Extended School Year. Just a reminder, Summer Academy caters to both regular education students who receive intervention services, and also students receiving special education via their IEP. An extended school year is solely for children that are, and students that are on IEPs. Okay, so here's the enrollment by the numbers. Arcade for Five Summer Academy, once again regular in SED, with 88 ESY exclusive, that does not include the regular Summer Academy, with 52 children. Preschool, we had two classes for a total of 16, eight and eight. Students receiving structured literacy through the Wilson program, we had 18 of those. Some of those were embedded within Summer Academy, and some of those would come in just for Wilson instruction, and then head back home. Little explorers and junior explorers, Clarkland explorers and Waterford explorers, this is our ASD, our Autism Spectrum Disorder programs. Those were also well attended. It ran 20 days, July 7th to August 7th, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 11:30 for Extended School Year, and 8:30 to 11 o'clock for Summer Academy. So those ESY students, they've got a half hour more instruction.
So really, the headline for the staffing is that, again, the second year in a row, we were able to get mostly Waterford staff. And that's really important for our kids because it adds continuity, especially with all those explorers programs. A lot of their same era signed up to do it in the summertime. So that's really helpful going into a new environment. Your, you know, summertime's a little bit trickier with scheduling and things like that, so that's really helpful. So the vast majority were folks from our schools, which was great. We additionally had some Waterford High School student, kids getting LTS hours, which was awesome. And then we had six UConn practicum students that came on a rotation and helped out as well. So that was really a positive thing.
And I don't think we put it in here, but I want to recognize Chris for going above and beyond and getting music instruction in PE during the summer as well for our kids. So it wasn't just the books. They had a chance to be creative as well.
It is on that too.
Oh, there we go. Well, I wanted to give you a shout out, all right? Take the compliment, buddy. So yes, here's our, the programming overview. Like Chris said, it was wonderful to have the majority of Waterford staff there because they know our curriculum, and they also know how we deliver the curriculum. So Wilson groups, Summer Academy was literacy and math. We had some credit recovery programs, the social skills groups. And as we put down here, they had PE twice a week and music and movement twice per week as well.
Just lastly, Joe and I have run this for quite a few years, both on our own and together. Something that we really love is that it was in elementary school. If you can make that happen again, that would be glorious. Little potties, playgrounds, it just, it makes sense. And then we really want to take a look at pre-K. As you saw on the slide before, we had 16. That's 16 students with IEPs. During the school year, they're spread across six classrooms with nine to 10 peers, and that's really those peer role models. That's, a lot of the benefit is them learning from each other. When you have 16 students with IEPs, even in two classrooms, it does make it tricky to really gain value for that time. So with our Director of Special Services, we want to reimagine that, maybe include some peers, and try to think of a different way to do that, so we can make that time really valuable to those kids. So a couple thoughts we have for the future, but that's, that's all we got.
I have a question on the staffing. It seems like 44 paraeducators. Was that in total and over different time periods? Or, because that seems like a very high number for 88 students.
Hundred percent. So if you look at 16 preschoolers, those are our most impaired preschoolers in the district. Many of them have one-to-ones. That's toileting and things like that. And then a lot of our explorers, our explorer population is growing. So if you bunch those together, I'm not going to do the math right in my head, but we're right around 30, just one-to-ones for kids in those programs. And then the other ones kind of, you know, giving some other needs.
And that's, that's really a safety measure, too. These students have them in their IP because of eloping, or, you know, some physical aggression, so.
I have no problem. I think that's wonderful. I just, it just jumped out at me as a huge number. It's more than the actual staffing of the certified teachers, you know. But if the need is there.
Yeah, and that's the value of growing in-district programming over the last couple of years. We've grown our explorers program. So for instance, I've had it at my school for like five or six years. It's gone from two students to 14. So it's a good thing that we have them in district, but that's kind of where you see some of the extra staffing.
Do those little explorers in the ESY programs, is that pretty much 100% or at least 90, 80, 75% of our student body that qualifies for that, that participates in that?
No, we have 450 specialized students in the district. So roughly, could be 440.
So only a quarter of them are participating.
Yeah, and that's really driven by the PPT process. That's a decision each year when there's a PPT, an annual review, for example, and we examine kids' programs. That decision's made at the planning and placement team meeting.
Some of those other students that don't qualify go to the Summer Academy.
We also have, we have a process now where we really look at regression. So there might be special education students that, all along, that momentum keeps going. We look at holiday breaks, we look at weekends, or even previous summers, and say, have we seen slides? And the Special Services Department last year was really focused on that, and gave the process to the case managers, saying, this is when you're going to look to see if there's a slide. And if there's not, we don't really need to recommend this.
Okay. And how is attendance? Is it, once they're committed, are they pretty good at following through for the summer, or do?
With the exception of pre-planned holidays to Disney World, people show up. Yeah. Our case managers are top of the line, so they're communicating with these families the whole time. And in the IEP, in the PPTs, when we plan for this, we ask them, what is your availability? Is it going to be worth your time? And they show up consistently. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, appreciate it. Next on the superintendent's report, I just want to spend a few minutes talking about artificial intelligence, which you may have heard of, and how it's taking hold here in the Waterford Public Schools. We're going to have a brief presentation tonight on some AI guidelines that have been developed over the course, over a year's worth of work. And in a few minutes, I'm going to hand it off to our two tech specialists, Laura McHugh and Lauren McKenna. But I just wanted to talk a little bit to the board and kind of frame the discussion and give some context to the AI guidelines. You might recall the phrase, preparing for students, preparing our students for life, learning, and work beyond school. That should sound familiar, because it's right from our strategic plan. Just about everything we do somehow relates back to this phrase. This year, we are taking a significant step forward by thoughtfully integrating artificial intelligence into instruction for our students in grades nine through 12. This decision is not a trend, but a strategic and necessary effort, directly aligned with our district's mission to prepare every student to contribute and succeed in an ever-changing world. The opportunity is our two tech specialists to sit in on some professional development at the high school in August, continuing education series in this particular area. And part of what the team grappled with at the beginning of that workshop was looking at what's called the Microsoft Work Index Report. This is something that Microsoft does every single year. They survey Fortune 500 companies and whatnot, and they develop, what are the trends in the workforce? I'm not going to read these statistics to you. You can see them on the slide, but I think it's clear to everybody that our students are entering a working world where they are going to have to have AI proficiency and AI skills. Our goal is to make sure that we're empowering our students not only to understand and use this technology, but do it wisely, safely, and ethically. And I think those are the themes that you'll hear throughout the course of the presentation by our two tech specialists. So at this point, I'll hand it off to you two.
Thank you. Thanks for having us this evening. You know, as we saw two decades ago, when the internet really became a thing, we saw education change in vast waves. In the same way, we have artificial intelligence that is here, and it's changing, and it's reshaping classrooms. It is changing the work that our educators are doing. And so we knew two years ago, even though AI has been around for a very, very long time, that AI is coming, AI is coming. So we knew that we needed to work fast and furious as a district, being tech people. And I can't really say stay ahead of it, because technology always seems to stay a little bit ahead of where we are, but at least gain hold of how we were going to approach it with our staff, with our students, and also with our families, which we'll talk about today. So two years ago, in the 23, 24 school year, our tech committee shifted our focus to really focusing on artificial intelligence. And so we formed the committee, and it was about 18 to 20 members, staff members, from all of our levels, elementary, middle, and high school, various positions within those buildings. We had special education teachers, instructional coaches, classroom teachers, name it. We also had members of our IT team that were on that with us as well, as well as members from central office. So we really had a great committee. And so our very first year, we focused on literacy for our committee. We needed to learn, what is AI? What is the power of it? And what are the risks of it? So we did a lot of just learning that initial year. And in tandem with that, we also had some fun, and we explored teacher-facing AI tools. Because at that time, there were no Connecticut compliant student-facing AI tools. So there was no way we could be using that with students. But our staff members, being over 18 years of age, could use AI. And so we did a lot of exploring and having fun with tools that were out there that could help with workload for teachers, that helped with the workflow of what they needed to create. Lesson planning, unit planning. There are tools out there that can differentiate text, so that you have varied levels of the same text for varied levels of readers in your classroom. So there really are some amazing tools that teachers can use for themselves to enhance teaching. And so we did that. We also began researching AI guidelines. This was kind of the beginning when universities started saying, uh-oh, we need to figure something out. We need to help our staff. What do we do with now this tool that kids can go out and look something up, use it, copy and paste it, you know? So they were beginning to write guidelines for both staff and for students at the university level. So we explored some of the beginning guidelines that they came out with from across the country. And then quickly, school systems began realizing that they needed to do the same. So we were looking at all different examples from all over the country. And we looked at, what did we like? What didn't we like? What seems effective for Waterford? So that was all going on that initial year that we were all learning together. And then last year, we connected with Edvance and began consulting with them. That's Matt Marvis. I'm sure that that name sounds familiar to you. He has been a speaker in the district, powerful speaker. And his team at Edvance has been doing some professional development with our teachers at the high school. And so we consulted with them, and we drafted our initial set of guidelines as a committee. That initial draft went through lots of revisions. That initial draft went through lots of revisions with the help from Tom and Craig. And and so eventually, we developed what I think, Tom, you've given, did they have that in their packet, our final guidelines?
I'm not positive. I wrote me to note that if they're not in there to give the board the full guidelines.
You'll get a copy of the full set of guidelines that was written for our staff. We also have developed some easy-to-read kind of front-back pagers for students and families as well, which we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. And then, once that was created and we got final approval, we began creating some resources for teachers that right now the high school teachers are using regularly. We developed a website that is filled with resources. We kind of call it our one-stop shopping for all things A I for staff. And then we also, as part of the guidelines, have created a menu of student and teacher A I use. And so we'll show you that, and that is part of our guidelines. It's really to help our teachers and students speak the same language about what you can and can't do on certain assignments with A I. And then we also have started creating a classroom-level matrix for teachers to begin contributing to, where they can kick in an assignment and then what would that look like in the different areas of our student A I use menu? So other teachers can go there and see how a history teacher might be using the menu to develop a lesson or an assessment or a unit or something like that. So it's really just going to eventually be a great resource for our educators. And then here we are for this school year. We have rolled out our A I guidelines to the high school staff. We will be rolling that out to the middle school and elementary schools soon. And then we, the high school has also begun to implement the A I literacy lessons for students. And that was a very big concern of ours is, you know, if we're going to jump into this, we have to educate not only our staff at what A I is, how it works, its risks, its power, but we need to do that with our students as well. And so there are lesson resources by Common Sense Media, which is a very embedded site that we use actually for our digital citizenship curriculum as well. And they have come out with A I lessons for K through twelve. And so we have those available to our staff as well. High school is already implementing those in English classes and advisory. And in addition to that, we at the high school are piloting a student-facing tool for the very first time that just started beginning of this year. We are piloting Google's Gemini, which is part of our Google workspace for education. It embeds beautifully with what we already use. It has safeguards and the things that we want to be sure that our students have when using an A I tool. So that's kind of where we are at our timeline.
That timeline pretty much showed you everything in a nice one pager that these are just going to highlight the different things that we have. So this is what our A I literacy looks like. And we felt really strongly that it should be considered a human-centered approach. We want to stress to students that A I is kind of the middle of the package. It should begin with human involvement and it should end with human empowerment for any work that they're doing. So this is one of the icons that you'll see all over our A I guidelines. We want to make sure that it's enhancing the learning, ethical and responsibly being used, and that all A I use must begin and end with human insight. So that's the focus of the guidelines that you'll get to see soon.
So these are our student and parent back-line pagers that we wanted to just get the big ideas out to students and parents. And so our student document really focuses in for kids on how you can use A I to aid with your learning. It can help you be creative, but whatever it outputs, you have to be sure that you evaluate and look at what it's giving you. Because it will give misinformation. It will give bias. And teaching them all of those things, it's a great tool, but you still have to be able to learn how to evaluate it. And so we focused in on that. And then you can see in both of these documents is our menu for student A I use. Again, just hoping teachers, students and families know this common language of how you can use A I. Are in this assignment, can you use it for brainstorming only? Or is it possible that you can use it just as a learning aid to create flashcards for yourself to study for an assessment? Those kinds of things. And so it's really helping develop that common language. And then for parents, we really wanted to stress that it has to be a partnership between home and school and that our main purpose is to guide our students how to use this tool responsibly and ethically. Because it's here and it's very stark, so we have to use things.
That's right. This is just a bigger feature of what the menu looks like. We had lots of different versions. They are out there. Lee Unferz is one of the people who gave that creating this menu. And Tom was instrumental in bringing that to our committee. That it's a choice board rather than a one, two, three, four, five option, which we thought students might think, I don't want to, I don't want to be a one, I don't want to be a five. So we turned it into a choice where the relationship between the teacher and the student as they're doing the assignment will be, am I allowed to use A I in what capacity? So we really liked that we came up with this menu. It's going to be posters for the classrooms starting with high school and middle school. So just the different ways, I mean, a teacher can definitely say, A I is not allowed for this assignment. It's completely, you need to complete the entire assignment. Brainstorming, as Laura just mentioned. They can use some kind of a disclosure statement, a teacher or student relationship, just to say, this is what you agreed to use A I for. Feedback and revision, which is a huge tool that students need. That is almost like having a thought partner as you're working on an assignment, collaboratively creating things. And each one has a disclosure about what kind of expectations would be necessary. Learning aid, this is the flashcards and the study guides that all students have all different learning levels for them to use. So this is our partnership and we think it's really important that teachers and their students stay on the same page about what is allowed and what isn't allowed. As we said, A I can be wrong and has a reason to make you have that bias. So we want to make sure that students learn that as far as they're concerned.
Here's our website. We'll snapshots of it. We're very proud of this. So here's our one-stop shopping for staff. You can see along the side, this will be curated at all times, so it's going to keep growing and contain more resources for our teachers. But we, you know, we have full access to the A I literacy guidelines at all times. We have some smart or just some quick links that will lead them to the menu for student A I use. You want to just click on it and bring it up in class and take a look at it. Here's our our matrix that I was talking about that will be growing over time. We have a part of it that will continue to list our district-approved A I tools. And so there's a section for students. Right now, it only says Gemini. And for teachers, we have some other that are Connecticut compliant that they can be using to help with their planning and in their classrooms. We also have the full access to the A I literacy lessons from Common Sense Media. So if you're a K five teacher, you can click right on it and it leads you right to all of the lessons that are recommended for kindergarten through fifth grade. Right now, we have our high school working on, actually, I think we have them doing the six through twelve currently because they're, they've got to learn it all, so they have, they have a lot to go through because we want to make sure that that they're ready. But that, we have that on there. We also have a prompt library. If any of you are familiar with using A I, your prompting is key. And you get better at it as you use it more. And so we have different prompts. Teachers can go and copy and then edit and use when they're using A I. It'll also help when teaching students how to prompt it to get the best output from A I. We also put in a page, obviously, with A I. Now we have to to learn how to cite it, just like we do magazines and books and the internet. So now we have to learn how to do that. So we've given teachers a resource to the M L A format, the A P A, so they can bring this up and work on it specifically with students if there is A I use allowed and inside.
And as Laura mentioned, we only had Gemini as C T pledge. Since then, this year, we're now up to six that are all C T pledged. So they're definitely all jumping on board and wanting to make sure that they keep our student information private and secure.
That's a good question. Do we have access to that website?
So right now, we have it in our staff write bookmarks so that like when our teachers log into their Google accounts, they can go to it in a bookmark.
We can certainly make that a bit.
Figure out how to get that.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to check it out. Thank you.
Absolutely. I can even just send you the link.
Sure. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay.
And that's really all we have for you.
AI, there we are. Any board members have questions or comments?
Very impressive.
Yep, thank you.
Commend the two of you. You've really done a great job. Well done. Excellent. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Samuelson, for your school presentation later in the year, you're going to kind of give the board an update on where things are six, seven months in?
Sure. No, no, I. But we're weaving it into our monthly faculty meetings as well, just to build the capacity, right? Because last year, it was really teacher-facing. We're transitioning to making it student-facing. So using that menu that they develop to start to talk about what assignments are our different content areas using on that menu. So it's sort of a give and take. So each department will present. And hopefully, the capacities will be in good shape to to present, I think, in December.
You'd have to be so helpful as we move forward.
Well done. Another presentation on the superintendent's report. Last maybe two weeks ago, Pat Powers, myself, our chair, Pat Fedor, had the opportunity to attend the Clark Lane Walkathon. Check presentations to the various charities that benefited from the Walkathon. And Pat and I talked and we both turned to each other and said, you've got to let the rest of the board hear about this because it's so tremendous. And this is not the first year that you'll hear about the history, but it's impressive. So I'll hand it off to Mr. Sax and you can introduce your team.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. So it's my pleasure to present two very inspiring teachers who, every day at Clark Lane, encourage and engage students in some incredible math lessons. But for our, they're solid monthly, up to a beautiful event. They teach the whole school a bunch of life lessons. I cannot, you know, state for strongly how wonderful the event is and they're going to describe it to you and it involves everybody in the whole school. It's really quite incredible. So Mr. G A and Mr. Castro.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Fedor, Mr. G R, Mr. Powers, for being here and members of the board, allowing us to. Speaking, I'll tell you a little bit more about the Walkathon. So this Walkathon's been taking place for five years here at Clark Lane, but there's a history behind it. And what we're hoping to do is just paint in about five minutes, just a picture of, it's not just students walking around the building trying to raise money. But I mean, this is really life lessons and giving back to the community. And most importantly, we're very proud of the the map that's built into it. So it really started back in two thousand and seven, back in East Line. Christina and I have been teaching together for twenty-one years now. And Mr. Powers probably remember the connected MacBooks that we used many, many years ago. And I look at the A I and where we've come. So we we purchased these books. We were work paper and pencil. But if you go to the lesson in the linear relations book, Mrs. Chang's class was going to be doing a Walkathon and the students were going to walk and raise money. And she wanted them to be able to create linear equations, to be able to see how it would grow. Well, Christina and I talked about it and we said, wait a second, why don't we do a Walkathon? And we said, like, get the kids involved and have them really see the math, own the math. And we thought maybe they would raise, I don't know, five thousand dollars was our goal, right? Hoping that they would do well. That first year, they raised fourteen thousand dollars. We were, we were shocked, right? So then later in the, in the lessons and stuff, they started to sell T-shirts for the Walkathon and stuff. So we said, all right, let's take that activity and build it. So this was our first T-shirt that we built. And we supported the Terry Broder Breast Cancer Foundation. So every lesson in that book, we made hands-on and they were actually doing the research, building the data and creating it. So with the challenge to go above and beyond, we went from fourteen thousand dollars to the next year, we raised forty-one thousand dollars. We just couldn't believe how involved the kids were in the community. Later, we collaborated with Old Saybrook Middle School because Terry Broder, maybe you don't know this, but Terry Broder did go to Clark Lane Middle School as she graduated from Waterford High School. She settled in Old Saybrook and that's where her kids were going to school. So we made a connection with the family. Tim came over and supported Christina and I, her husband. And then he said, why don't we bring it to Old Saybrook? So we went to Old Saybrook and we did two Walkathons over there. So here at Clark Lane, Mr. Sax was very generous and allowed him to work together with the staff this part of the fifth Walkathon. And I can say right now, over the years, Christina and I have raised over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with students to give back to the communities. Christina's going to spend a little bit of time and share with you how we actually took the math lessons and incorporated it from the Walkathon and brought it into the classrooms.
So this is real data, what you see here. So in sixth grade, unit eight of the sixth grade curriculum is describing data. So we take the data from the Walkathon and we actually calculate, the students calculate the mean. So from our Walkathon from twenty twenty-five, the average number of miles that the students walked collectively was six point seven. The median was seven miles, the mode was six, the range was eleven. So this is actual data that we use to find those measures of central tendency. In seventh and eighth grade, we take it a step further and we take a look at slope and Y intercept. In eighth grade, they look at some systems of linear, linear equations. B representing the amount of money that the kids received in donations. And the M, the slope, representing the amount of money that the students received in pledges. So kind of giving them that perspective of the difference between the two and how it ties back to our Walkathon data. This is our teamwork. This is our biggest cheerleader right here. This is Chris McNeil. So it's, this is a huge event, you can imagine, with all those kids. And you're going to see how many kids it was walking. It's a, it's a collaborative effort. All the staff works together, fostering a culture of teamwork. We have an eighty-plus punch list that we meet with Mr. Sax. And we try to continuously refine it to make sure that we continuously improve our Walkathon each year. And as I said, every member contributes to the process, establishing that collective effort and making sure that each year, we're kind of making it more and more efficient and effective. So to give you some information in terms of some, some hard data in terms of how many students this actually entails, we're talking about five hundred and fifty students who are walking around the campus, not just the building. But we are outside. We have it all mapped out. We've got mile markers everywhere. We've got five hundred and fifty students who are walking. Collectively, we walked three thousand two hundred and sixteen miles. To put that in student perspective, because if you tell them that, they have no idea how far that is. So we tell them, imagine that you're in Waterford and you go due west to San Francisco and then south to Disney. That's three thousand two hundred and sixteen miles. The highest amount of money raised by one student this year was one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And we had over twenty incentives and prizes. One of them being, we brought one of our little signs. We had these signs out in front of Clark Lane Middle School. You may have seen them driving by, thanking all of the wonderful sponsors that we had. One of our sponsors, we didn't bring the, the sign for this one, but we have the coveted, the coveted prize is the Dairy Queen ride in a limo, I mean, a limo ride to Dairy Queen, which Mr. Disquordia, your daughter was honored by that. So so it really truly is an amazing feat. It it really is a collective effort with all of these kids. And one of the big prizes that we had this year from the alma mater, they donated two basketballs signed autographed by players. So that was great for the kids.
So how did the students do overall? So they raised, this year, they raised forty thousand one or two hundred and fifteen dollars. And once again, I cannot tell you how, you know, dedicated those kids are. They get excited about it. They're asking about it already, right? But the math lessons that we pulled together, it really is a fantastic program. We divide that amongst three charitable organizations and every year, we sit down and we talk about who those organizations should be. I will tell you that every year is always the Terry Broder Breast Cancer Foundation. We started it back in two thousand and seven. My mom was diagnosed with breast cancer at the time. And the commitment and the connections I have with them, I I just make that commitment back to them that we will always include Terry Broder as part of, as one of the organizations. The other thing we've done is we've helped to fill enough money in two of the high school scholarships. Most recently, we helped out with Madeline Gray's scholarship. So there is enough money in that scholarship that every year, they will have a thousand dollars to give to a high school student. So we we look at different options of what we can do. This past year, we did three different donations. We did the Terry Broder Breast Cancer Foundation, as I mentioned. We also did the Cactus Jack Foundation. And we know that they do an awful lot for this organization. Mike Basetto is just a, you know, fantastic supporter, going out there, trying to find those families that need something more. And we are one of the biggest donors to the Cactus Jack Foundation at this point because of the money that we. Cactus Jack Foundation at this point, because of the money that we donated. And then we also donated to U.S. Paralympics, in the past, we donated to Special Olympics and supported our kids through the different programs, the unified programs that we have at school, and this year, they said, "Why don't we do something a little bit bigger?" And Steve Empt is a former colleague of mine, Steve, unfortunately, after a terrible accident, was a paraplegic, but he picked himself up, and he comes out, and he speaks to students, he came up to our school and talked to the kids, we're thinking that he's gonna maybe come to the high school, I haven't spoken to you about that yet, but we're in the works of that. And so he's going to the Olympics, and we're supporting his organization with $12,500. So that's the whole program, it's amazing work that the kids are doing, and we just thought it'd be good to share that with you and let you know that we're really making math come alive and doing good for this community. So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
Do you have any questions?
I just have a comment, as a young girl who thought that math was terrible, I would have benefited from this kind of active learning, and I think the work that you're doing is really wonderful, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Amazing, just wonderful.
Program's phenomenal.
It's fantastic.
And I think the bigger it can get, the better it will be.
Yep.
Even better. So hopefully, it grows by leaps and bounds for this coming year.
We have plans, I'll share with you.
I'm sure you do.
Thank you, both.
Thank you, Jen.
Had just a few, that's the end of the formal presentations under superintendent's report, but a couple items of note going on in the district, Great Neck School, recently last week, celebrated World Peace Day with a variety of activities. Quaker Hill School recently had their summer reading celebration last Friday, Mr. Discordia was dressed in a white suit, yes, you heard that correctly, and kids were able to sign their name and write messages, and teachers and Mr. D. were soaked with ice buckets as part of that celebration. I had the chance to go up there, it was quite an event. I passed on getting soaked, so. But the Quaker Hill PTA also had Back to School Bash Night last week, very well attended, and recently, all of our schools in, at the elementary level in one form or another, participate and start with Hello Week, which is certainly in line with our district theme this year around creating that sense of belonging, and making sure that every student has a connection in our schools. And Quaker Hill this year put together a short video that I thought I'd share with the board. Excellent job. Those languages obviously coincide with some of the 26 languages spoken in our district every day, so thank you, Mr. D. and team, for putting that together.
This is Gonzalez, our head team, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Just a couple other quick notes, 350-plus parents attended the Clark Lane Back to School Night the other week, fantastic attendance, and the CLMS Fall Festival will be held on Saturday, October 4th, and coming out of Waterford High School with some student recognition, we have four National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, which is quite an accomplishment, Titus Baraklau, Zaya Haglen, that may sound familiar, one of our student boy reps and does our meetings, Lucy Mullin, and Alexander Seltzer, and Waterford High School also has a Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship Foundation winner, again this year, two years in a row, Waterford High Senior Jada Collins. So I know many of us will be attending that on October 23rd, so congratulations to our outstanding students. Any questions, happy to take them, if not, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, first, the Board of Ed Committee reports, policy.
Yes, we're heading at 5:30 today, we've been here for quite a while, to review some of the technical and legal challenges, changes to the policy, some were on pool safety, cleaning products, retention and disposal of records, defibrillators, and other items that will now go forward to the board.
Thank you. I think the only other one, there was a revision to the
Promotion.
From the field naming ad hoc committee meeting that was held back in June, so the revision is included in your notes, my vote wasn't reported.
Mine was reported, inaccurate.
Okay, they got that?
Yeah.
It's been revised?
Yes.
Okay. The Board of Ed Liaison Reports, Craig, or no, Lori, Lauren?
Yeah, Lauren, nothing really applicable, thanks.
Craig, anything from cable, TV? And?
Not today.
Nothing? And now?
Well, actually, Safe Futures Walk, I'm sorry, Safe Futures Walk is the Sunday.
Go ahead.
October 5th.
October 5th, yes.
Sunday, October 5th.
Yes. We don't have any members here, reps from RTM, Board of Finance, or Park and Rec, I don't see our librarian here tonight.
I'm Park and Rec.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I should introduce myself.
We could go right by you then, if you'd like. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Bob Kine, newest member of the Reckon Bar Department, also on the library board, here tonight.
Thanks for being here, we won't pass over you next time. And Waterford High School students, we don't have anyone here tonight.
We do, yes.
We have students who chop it up at the fifth back gate, I'm sure. All right. Good evening, thank you, I just wanna thank Superintendent G R. and all the Board of Ed members to continue to support this initiative. We're fortunate enough this year to bring back three student Board of Ed liaisons, two familiar faces, they're seniors this year, Zaya Haglen and A.K. Wilson, and then joining the group this year is junior Kenai Hill, three amazing students, they do everything that you want a Lancer to be. So before they talk about some of the events and happenings here at Waterford High School since the start of the year, I just want, since it's the first meeting, just to hear a little bit about them, just to see how involved they are, so you know where their perspective and insights are coming from. So for that, I'll turn it over to A.K.
Hi, I'm A.K. Wilson, I do a lot at the high school, I do the jazz band along with Zaya, I'm captain of the football team, let's see, what else? Principals Forum, I'm a member of, and have been since my freshman year, I've been on class council and student council all through, even in middle school and elementary school. I currently own my own business outside of school, detailing boats and now cars as well.
Okay. I'm Zaya, I'm a member of Mongol National Art Society, Science National Society, Troy End, jazz band, as Aki mentioned, I also look president.
My name's Kenai Hill, I'm a junior at Waterford High School, obviously, I'm also part of Principals Forum, and I'm part of Spanish Art Society, and I'm part of class council and student council as well. I've been dancing for multiple years in high school, and doing musicals as well.
So these three have a lot of time on their hands. They're not busy at all.
So the first day of school, we, last year, we, Mr. Samuelson started the tradition of kind of splitting the day, so we had our A-Day in the morning and our B-Day in the afternoon, and in the middle, we had some sort of fun celebration where the whole school was together doing something, like last year, we had a dunk tank, where we were dunking Mr. Samuelson for about an hour and a half. This year, we had Beach Bash, so we had Kona Ice there, shaved ice for Greek hall students, and then different games and snacks, and we just got to see everybody on the first day of school, which was nice, to be able to reconnect with a lot of people that maybe didn't see over the summer.
Yeah, I thought it was really fun.
Did I go too fast?
No, you're good. And then on Friday, we went to Brownstone, which is a water park in an abandoned quarry, which was super fun, it was our senior class trip. It did rain throughout the day, but it was a good break, I thought.
No, we had a blast getting back, and the teachers that went with us, we had, they were, they were involved too, I mean, we were, is there a video? I think a few of the teachers were going off the blob on top, watching some students, the teachers were really into it just as much as we were, which made it enjoyable for all of us.
Yeah, it was really fun, it was a good trip.
I did go to the senior class trip, because I'm not a senior, but it looked really fun at the library thing. But so this year, we've had like a new policy at school, and it's like a cell phone policy, obviously, and last year, we had a lot of like new restrictions with phones to adjust to, but this year, we had a lot more, and for example, their advisory, they can't use our phones, and there's just more restrictions within classrooms as well. I have a lot of opinions about this, I think there's been a lot of positive changes, but I think it frustrates a lot of students. For me, I feel like it's had positive impacts, I think I've been able to focus more and like be more attentive, and just recognize that, you know, it's important, it's important to have times when you're on your phone and when you're not, and I think other students have had a harder time adjusting to this, but for me, I think it's been beneficial, but sometimes it's hard, but there's ways around it, I guess, I think.
I agree, I think it's been well received by the majority of the student population at Waterford. Personally, I don't mind at all putting my phone up in the caddy, so that's the main thing, every classroom has a caddy now, and we each have numbers that we put our phones in every day, and I think it's just a great thing for us, I mean, I've noticed a better focus in the majority of my classes as well, just not having it in my pocket.
Yeah, I think the hardest part of the cell phone policy for me is remembering the number of my phone goes into, all my classes, they're all different, but I've only had my phone since February, so it's not been a super big adjustment for me, but I think it's definitely been good during class time to put it away, and during study hall, you can have it out, but not going to the library, which I think has helped also make the library more focused and quiet space for people to live in.
I think like the hardest part for me about adjusting to like the new phone policies was not having an advisory, so I think I was just so familiar with like walking an advisory after being in like my first two blocks, and just going on my phone just to like check, so now like every time Mr. Seltzer's like, "You have to put it out," like, oh, yeah, but you know, obviously, I comply, but it's, you know, sometimes it's just like a habit in your brain, but I think it's good to remind kids, like to break negative habits, so, yeah.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, you have a motion, please?
I move that the Waterford Board of Education approves the board goals for 2025-2026 school year as presented.
Second?
Craig is gonna bring them up, if need be. Should be one, yep. If there were revisions, we can do them right on the fly. I will tell you, they remain relevant, I don't think there's anything on the list that's not important, but obviously, they're the goals and priorities that the board sets for our team and district, but I can tell you, they're important.
I didn't have any questions about the goals until we had the AI presentation, and then I'm thinking, maybe we should have something in there about AI as well, but I don't have anything, any idea of what to put in there, but I'm wondering if it should be included.
I don't think it's necessary, and I'll tell you why.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at our mission statement, which is posted here, you know, to make sure that our students are prepared to contribute and succeed, as I mentioned, and, you know, when you look at our vision of the graduate, which I can't read from this far away, you know, it talks about making sure that our students are ready for the world, including being digital citizens, and then you look at our strategic plan, making sure that students are prepared for life, learning, and work. I can tell you that it is a priority of the district, I mean, certainly, you're right, it's important to do what you want to do, but whether it's a goal or priority for the coming year, I think you see that the team is committed to the work.
I do see that.
Yes, I do, yes.
And I think, I think when you think about it, AI is just another challenge, another tool, you know, in a whole bunch of them, and we don't list.
Got it, got it. I'm happy with the goals as presented.
Anybody else have a question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And no abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
The next motion is?
I move that the Waterford, I move that the Waterford Board of Education approves the revised 2025 Waterford Board of Education regular meeting schedule as presented.
Second? Tom, did you want to fill him in?
Yeah, this just, this moves the October 23rd meeting to October 30th, so board members in central office and high school principals and whatnot can attend the Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship Dinner, and then it moves the November meeting from Thursday the 13th to Wednesday the 12th, and that was really predicated on my availability, which I appreciate the flexibility to make that happen.
We thank you for not moving it to Halloween last year.
Yes, I remember.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Amanda, I forgot you there. Any abstentions? Thank you. Next, I have a motion.
Yes, I move that the Waterford Board of Education approves free breakfast and lunch for students who qualify for reduced-price meals for the 2025-2026 school year.
Have a second? One second? Thank you.
Yeah, this question was asked of administration to do a little research on that, obviously, I tasked Mr. Manzini and our Director of Food Services, Diane Houlihan, to provide the board, you know, with some data around that, currently, reduced-price breakfast, I believe it's 30 cents, and lunches are 40 cents, this would be a $10,000 cost to the food service account, if it's not board funds, that's a self-sustaining program, to make this happen for the remainder of the year, and there's enough fund balance within the Food Services Department to support this, should the board want to do this. Joe, anything to add?
Nope, I had all the notes.
Any other, any questions or comments?
I actually brought this forward, and because I think it's really important that our kids are fed in order to learn, you have to have a full belly, the old Italians always said, "You gotta feed the student first, and then you can go from there." But I actually wanted to look into having all meals free, but that cost was exorbitant, but the $10,000 fee is certainly doable, and minimal for the benefit it's going to provide.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstained?
Aye.
Thank you, Amanda, and no abstentions. Thank you. I have a D.
I will not make this motion.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Chris.
Discussion and possible action on the naming of a school facility for a community member.
That's not the motion.
We're on D., right?
You gotta go to motion.
No. I have a D.
I make a motion that the Waterford Board of, I make a motion that the Waterford Board of Education approves the naming of the Waterford High School track after Richard Dick Cipriani.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second?
Are there any questions or comments?
I have comments.
So do I, you go first.
I'll let you go first.
No, I'm, I'll wait, thank you.
Okay. I don't often speak at length during these meetings, but tonight, I feel compelled to, and when I'm speaking, I'm lumping them both in, so I don't have to do it twice. So I want to speak in strong support of the naming of the baseball field. So I want to speak in strong support of the naming of the baseball field as Jerry Russo Field. And the track field is Dick Cipriani Field, and I realize that it's gonna be a second motion. These two men were not just coaches, they were educators, they were mentors, and they were community builders. They left an extraordinary mark on the town of Waterford, on southeastern Connecticut, and on the state as a whole. They represent the very best of our community, and I believe the time has come for this board to move forward with the naming for these facilities after them. I'm a sports guy. Some of you know that, some of you don't know that. I worked for the Yankees for a very long time. And sports, it's dear in my heart. A clear history of this process. June 3rd, there was a committee meeting held by the board for the naming of the fields. There were no issues raised. June 16th, there was another meeting held. There were no issues raised. June 26th, this matter was brought, was brought before the full board. At that meeting, the vote to name the track for Mr. Cipriani was four voting no, one voting yes. Uh, naming of the field for Mr. Russo resulted 3-3, which also meant the motion failed. The month of July, there was no board meeting. Then on August 28th, at the regular meeting, the community came out in overwhelming support of both Mr. Russo and Mr. Cipriani. Testimony after testimony was given. And it was clear that the people of Waterford, as well as those from across southeastern Connecticut, wanted to see these two gentlemen audited in this way. And I, I've yet to see, with the exception, unless I'm missing something, is that only one person was against it, which I read on the day, but that person, to my understanding, doesn't even live in the town. Why does this matter? The requirements have been met. Supporters gathered, they required, they gathered the requirement, 100 signatures, they secured the letters, and they documented extraordinary contributions and exemplary character for both of them. Both men have earned acclaim and recognition, not just in Waterford, but across the region and the state. At the June 3rd and June 16th committee meetings, no issues were raised. At the August 28th meeting, we heard overwhelming public support, and I still didn't hear anyone voicing the opposition. And discussing the finances, I don't think the finances are a barrier. I think there's enough money for the signage. The signage has been done before. Even if the board decides not to allocate the funds or we can't get the funds, I think that the community will be ready to step up. I think that we can get donations to get, be raised with these signs. And I don't think that that should be a reason to not honor, honor these men. Both of these men, they were prominent coaches who shaped the identity of Waterford Athletics. They embodied the role of the teacher-coach. Educators first, coaches second, and lifelong mentors always. Mr. Russo is synonymous with Waterford baseball. He won 510 games. And I'll say again, 510 games, 16 ECC championships, five state championships. To me, it's incredible. And to me, it's not even a discussion to me. And I'm saddened that I wasn't here. In my personal life, my professional life, I thought these things were a no-brainer. I teach high school. June was very busy for me. I have prom, graduation. I'm not dismissing my responsibilities or others, but I had no idea that this was gonna be such a big topic. In 85, Mr. Russo was named National High School Baseball Coach of the Year. 2002, he was inducted into the Connecticut Coaches Hall of Fame. Beyond the wens, he also taught physics in our schools, blending academics and athletics in a way that defined the spirit of education in Waterford. He is the man that's most responsible for the deep sports culture in this town. And ripple effects of his success can still be seen across every other sport in Waterford today. The naming of this baseball field after him would honor the legacy and ways that it deserves. Mr. Cipriani likewise. It was more evidence that he was a coach of his generation. His influence stretched across multiple generations, as evidenced by the turnout and heartfelt public comments at recent meetings that we had last month. His leadership, mentorship, character, they all continue to be remembered fondly by athletes and families alike. The naming of this track after Mr. Cipriani would ensure that he would impact lives on for future generations. It's our responsibility, as I read, as a board, I feel, to encourage civic engagement. To dismiss efforts like this, after all the requirements have been met, with overwhelming community support runs, and runs encounters to the principles of education. Education is not only about what we learn in textbooks, but it's about the values we pass on. Respect for those who came before us and recognition of those who shaped our communities. End closing. When we talk about naming fields, it's not just about putting up a sign. It's about preserving history. It's about teaching future generations who we are, what we value, and who we honor. These two fields would stand as a lasting reminder of two men who gave extraordinary service, earned the respect of our community, and inspired countless young people, many of them who are now adults along the way. For those reasons, I strongly urge this board to reconsider and approve the naming of the baseball field and of the track. The community has spoken, the requirements have been met, the support is overwhelming. The legacy of these two men deserves to be recognized in a way that will endure for generations to come. Thank you. And I'll just close and say again, I don't speak a lot here at these meetings. I listen to everyone, I take it all in. I think in my, I think this is my second term in eight years on the board. I think this is the longest that I've ever spoke. But I sat here last month and I listened to these men speak, and it was just heartfelt, and I, I just don't get it. So I think you know my vote. I'm done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Hi, would, go ahead, Pat.
Okay. I, I will be echoing a lot of what Mr. Jones just said. Uh, the Board of Ed Ad Hoc Committee was comprised of Board of Ed members, community members, teachers and coaches. The recommendation to approve both of these petitions should not be taken lightly. The two gentlemen who spearhead at this process did their due diligence. And the numerous community members who spoke in favor at the August Board of Ed meeting spoke enthusiastically about the contributions and lasting effects both Mr. Cipriani and Mr. Russo had, not only on their team members, but the Waterford school and community at large. A point was made at the last meeting that said the purpose of naming a field or building after an individual should not be based solely on how many people knew them, but it should also be done to ensure that individuals who can be described as high-value community members be recognized in such a way to ensure that future generations see that Waterford values those community members who use their skills for the benefit of the community. I'm done. Anything else?
I, I'd like, I'd like to make a statement. First of all, I'd like to say that I, I and Ms. Pat Fodor were at the committee meetings, so I have firsthand knowledge of what happened at those meetings. However, unfortunately, the minutes did not reflect exactly what happened at those meetings, and therefore they have been revised. I'd like to address two components of the naming of the facilities. One is the process, and two are the credentials of the, of the candidates. As to the process, Policy Regulation 7012 defines the formation of a subcommittee to evaluate the evidence brought by petitioners and specifies the candidates must have special significance of service and have made extraordinary contributions to education. It requires at least 100 signatures and a minimum of 10 letters of recommendation. The two petitioners brought 108 signatures and the minimum 10 letters for each candidate. They also spoke their, of their appreciation for the two coaches at our initial meeting, and it was suggested more letters would be helpful and funding might be an issue. No additional letters were provided and no monetary, uh, commitment was made. When one committee member asked to review the resumes of the candidates, she was told that would be done at the next meeting. That never happened. The first meeting lasted 30 minutes, and the second lasted only 11 minutes. At the second meeting, we approved the minutes and proceeded to a vote. That vote was inaccurately recorded and corrected tonight to reflect my yes vote for Mr. Russo and my no vote for Mr. Cipriani. I think Mr. Russo's credentials are worthy of naming a field in his honor. And most of the letters and most of the people that spoke were all about Mr. Russo and his credentials. I do not think the credentials of Mr. Cipriani rise to that recognition of, level of recognition. Mr. Cipriani was a coach, Assistant Athletic Director and Athletic Director. By his resume, but his resume does not rise to the level of extraordinary. He held the position of Assistant AD and AD at Waterford High School for almost 30 years and was only recognized once in 1992 by the CIAC Board of ADs. He was not given any other local, state, New England, or national awards. He had winning seasons and impacted many of our students, but that's what all coaches do. He was good at his job, but he did not rise to the level of acclaim necessary to name a facility in his honor. There are others who should be considered. For instance, Jan Merrill coached Waterford High School Track and won a spot on the Olympic team. Jack Crowley, who recently passed away, was a winning, winning, highly admired coach. The positively impacted Waterford students and our present track, track coach, Mr. Gamble, is an exemplary coach. There are money on some heroes out there serving our committee, community. We cannot name every field or closet after people. There have to be credentials that we stand on that use, and, and unfortunately, Mr. Cipriani, uh, naming of his field, Schattenfield, was attached to Mr. Russo's. Mr. Russo had the credentials. Mr. Cipriani did not. Additionally, the present field was named the Alumni Memorial Field in 1973 to honor all WHS veterans. And I strongly feel naming pieces of a complex after others will only dilute that recognition. Naming a facility is a forever honor, a forever honor. It should be done conservatively and with a multiple of exemplary contributions assessed and weighed. Is the candidate truly worthy of a forever honor? Do the candidate's credentials merit such recognition? For Mr. Cipriani, I think not. He's just riding the coattails of Mr. Russo. For Mr. Russo, I think yes. I will not be voting to name the track field for Mr. Cipriani, but I will vote yes for Mr. Russo and the baseball field.
I'd like to make this one. I really appreciate all these impassioned, uh, statements and, uh, and I particularly appreciated the statements from the last meeting. I didn't attend the last meeting, but I listened really carefully and I very much appreciated you gentlemen and the others who spoke, um, so passionately and, um, so vehemently about your coaches. Um, I recognize how important a coach or teacher is to a student, and when you make that connection with people, you, you can just, uh, change a person's life. So although I initially was against the idea of making new signs and changing names, I appreciate you all coming out to speak, and I think that's what we're here for. We want to hear what our constituents have to say. You've told me here, you've told me on the golf course, um, and, uh, and so I'm gonna change my vote. Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I just make one, because the issue of funding has come up several times tonight. So I just want to provide some historical context to the funding question or, I don't know, to questions. So there's been three namings in this district, uh, well, four if you count Alumni Memorial Field. I wasn't here for the Sweeney Gym naming, but I'm told that the lettering on the wall was paid for by the district, but the bronze or brass plaque on the wall was paid for by private funds. I could be wrong about that. Does that ring a bell? The Gold, Harold Goldberg Atrium, uh, that was approximately $950. That was paid for by the district. The Nazarcheck Field naming, the sign was donated by, uh, the company Fast Signs. We estimate that it would be, uh, if the board were to approve these, would be somewhere between the thousand and 1,500. We just bought a sign for the field now that we know it was officially named that says Alumni Memorial Field. It is up. It's below the scoreboard. That was just under $1,500. The funds exist within the maintenance budget. If the petitioners of this wanted something more elaborate, uh, or in addition to the standard signage, that would be in alignment with, uh, the Sweeney naming. That would be on them. But the funds exist within the maintenance budget to support this as it has in the past. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, because that question was asked by a board member as well.
Thank you.
Oh, he's still under discussion? I think, you know, I should probably, you, you gotta take a deep look at yourself. And myself, I should probably go to more plays that are here, more of the arts, more of the theater. I try to go to a lot of the sports things, because I, I'm a sports guy. So I hear all these comments and I, I, I'm listening to them. But for the board member or board members who say, this should be named after other people, I think it's great. But we haven't heard from those other people, those other names. And there's nothing to say that they can't come forward and go through the same process that these gentlemen have had, have gone through. When you look and you go to these games, three years ago, four years ago, the basketball team was in the playoffs for Waterford. That gym was packed, and it wasn't just packed with kids. It was packed with people that are my age and older, who just went to a game to see Waterford because they're from Waterford. There's something to be said about that. We have the biggest gym in the area, and it fills up. And it fills up because there's like passion in this town. There's like people that are showing up for this, that they're about sports, and these are memories. I feel like we don't remember, when we leave school, we don't remember what we learned in Chapter Three. We remember the things that happened with our teachers, the coaches. When we sit and hear these kids talk about the high school, they're gonna remember this trip, going to that place. They're gonna remember the teacher jumping off of the thing, bouncing. They're gonna remember field day. They're gonna remember things. These men have had an impact. To me, it's a no-brainer for both of these. And if these other people want to come forward and people want to come forward, I'm willing to listen to them. And I think it's a good thing if we have more that are coming forward that meet the criteria, and then we have to figure out what to name it. But I think they've done what they're supposed to do. I've heard it. It's a no-brainer to me. And I know we're under discussion, and if you come to these meetings, I don't talk a lot, but I'm talking for this one, because it's important.
Uh, any other questions or comments from board members? Can I recognize somebody from the audience?
No.
No, I don't think so during here. Put your hand down. All right, if there are no other comments or questions, um, all in favor of approval, approving the naming of the Waterford High School Track after Richard Dick Cipriani?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Amanda. Anyone opposed?
May.
What was that?
Joy.
Thank you.
To the chair, can we do a roll call just so we make sure we get it right?
Sure. Mr. Jones?
I have an aye, a yes.
Mr. Merriman?
In your favor, aye.
Amanda?
Aye, yeah.
Lori?
Aye.
Marsha?
No.
I'm a yes. Joy?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
And Kathleen?
Yes.
Thank you. So it passes seven to two.
So it passes seven to two?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Thank you. Can we go to the next motion?
That's my plan.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't trying to take over. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's election year. Amanda, Marsha, would you like?
I move that the Waterford Board of Education approves the naming of the Waterford High School Baseball Field after Gerald Jerry Russo.
Second?
Second.
I would assume we've, we've heard your comments.
My, my comments are the same. I don't think I have to reread them. I think I've covered them. If you'd like, I will. But in the interest of time, I think I've captured all my thoughts the same.
Dinner tonight. Does anyone else have a comment?
I got ice cream in the car. I'm with you. I don't talk a lot, so you know that. I keep my mouth shut, but if you gotta talk, you have to talk. And while we're under discussion, I have a little curveball after. When we get to letter F, I want to bring something up under new business, just so you know, before we motion or adjourn.
Are there any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor of approval of the naming of the Waterford High School Baseball Field after Gerald Jerry Russo? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, Amanda. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And now we are moving on to Item F, which is...
No action, but I'm happy to give the board some context why this is on the agenda, if that's appropriate.
Sure.
Sure. So in my, this is my eleventh school year in the district, we've always had a booster club policy. And that's, you know, part of our policy manual. And we've never had formal booster clubs in that time. Within the last four to six weeks, I've been approached by two different sets of parents slash citizens looking to initiate booster clubs in the community to support different aspects of the school district. In reviewing the booster policy with our Board Council, shipment of good one, they recommended that we adopt some regulations that obviously help clarify policy, provide some guardrails and some clarifications and all of those. And because these booster clubs are looking to form now in real time, under Bylaw nine zero seven six, I expedited that process. These can certainly be revised, but I know in working with Mr. Samuelson and Mr. Landry, these, one particular group to support athletics was really looking for as much information as they could get in the very short term. So that's the context for why they're here. And as with any regulation, board input is welcome. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
On the second paragraph of the booster club regulation or policy, it says that, you know, they're going to establish their bylaws and constitution. Do we put those on file? Do we keep those on file? Do we put them on the web? Is there a place where people can go to, to look and see that?
So the policy says that in order to be officially recognized by the district as a legitimate booster, they must submit those things to the superintendent's office. I have not received those things yet from either entity out there. But they must submit bylaws and the associated documents that are outlined in the policy. Because they are separate entities from the district, we wouldn't post them necessarily on our website, but they have to be available to the members of the booster clubs.
Okay, are they available to the public?
They are private organizations.
Oh, okay.
They are, it's similar to like Project Safe Grad or P T Os. They are not subsidiaries of the district. Those are private and separate organizations.
So it's up to them to keep them on file and to make them public?
They'll be on file certainly in my office in accordance with the policy. But we wouldn't necessarily have responsibility for publicizing those bylaws.
Okay. And then a little farther on, it says, "Any item purchased by booster clubs for schools or school activity shall become the property of the district." Are we housing that, those materials and those things? Or are they keeping them? How is that, how are we going to know if they are?
Yeah, so that's meant to really state that, let's say they donate a, I'm just going to call it, if you know what a tackling sled is, I didn't play football.
Yeah.
But if you know what, if they donate that to the district, that becomes district property upon donation. It would, they can't like take it back. They can't say, oh, we're going to use it for some other purpose. It becomes district property, and at that point, we're responsible for storing it.
Okay. That's all I had. I think it's wonderful that we have the interest in the booster clubs.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think it's wonderful that we have added sport for the sports.
But I think historically, it's, I guess I want to understand then how we are going to comply with Title Nine. So if all the boosters are football parents and all they do is donate footballs and sliding sleds and things that are specific to that sport, how does that comply with Title Nine?
Great question. So when Mr. Samuelson and I met with the athletic booster parent, the interested parties, we really laid it out for them. So for athletics in the town of Waterford, there's really three funding sources. There's board budget, there's fundraising that the teams do, and then the third funding source would be boosters. And we explained to the boosters that we would have a responsibility at making sure that the totality of those funding sources is fair and equitable and balanced. So for example, if they raised fifty thousand dollars and they said, we want to give all fifty thousand to the football team, we would have to look at the other buckets of funding amongst, well, the three buckets, board funds, fundraising, boosters, to make sure those are balanced over a period of time. It is not, the test from the Office of Civil Rights is not on a year-to-year basis down to the dime. It's over a period of time. Is there, is it equitable and balanced? We explain to them that if they, if they raised exorbitant amounts of money in a given year or over time, that we have final say, and that's in the policy and the regulations. The district has final say how those funds are distributed. So they can say, well, we'd really like you to buy forty footballs for the, you know, for practice. And we would say, well, in an effort to balance it out, some of this money is going to need to be diverted to other athletics. So they, they're aware of that. That is the guidance we've received from our attorneys to make sure that we don't run afoul of Title Nine.
Well, and I think that's...
And the regulations speak to that.
When you're talking about dollars?
Yes.
I mean, are they only providing dollars? Like, my point was if they donate equipment that is sport-specific, how do we make sure we are complying with Title Nine?
So that would be assigned a monetary value, that donation of pieces. So let's say they donate a ten thousand dollar piece of equipment. I don't know what that would be. There's a monetary value to that. So we have to look at funding sources of other sports. So that is Title Nine guidance from the feds. That's Title Nine guidance from our attorneys. So if they donate a ten thousand dollar piece of equipment, we need to make sure that that is balanced elsewhere.
Is there any way we can require them to only raise money and not donate equipment?
When we met with them, we said we prefer monetary donations. So for example, they might want to buy a piece of technology. We want to buy, I'm making this up, they didn't offer this. We want to buy a certain camera that coaches could use. It's an aerial view. We would want to make sure that's compatible with our networks and Wi-Fi and et cetera. Use that as an example. That we would prefer monetary donations as opposed to equipment donations to make sure it's compatible with our already district existing equipment. The secondary reason is we can probably get a lot better pricing than a booster club because we buy, we have state contracts and bids and all of those things, state bid lists that we go through. So I...
We also discussed sort of like your concern largely of storage, right? Now that falls on us. So any equipment that needs to be maintained over time for sustainability, it's not going to be approved because then that comes across with that as well. So, and a lot of it is looking at equipment that can be used through multiple sports. They talked about buying the rain gear for the football players. That gear could then be used for other sports too.
Well, because they're a private entity, they could, they could be raising lots and lots of money, but only donating a certain amount of it to the school. Or, and they might, you know, fund a banquet or something like that or take all the kids out for pizza after a game or something like that. That's going to be a lot harder to track. The fact that these are, I think the boosters are wonderful. And volunteers are so hard to come by these days that I hate to say anything, but I am concerned about the accountability of the funds because we have no control, they're a private entity. We have no control over that.
Right. They would maintain, they would maintain, but they're not formed yet. But these entities maintain their own bank accounts. They're responsible for their own audits. If they're a five oh one C three registered, there's compliance and that. That's all on them. We want no finances intertwined with them at all.
But then how on earth do we find out if they're being equitable?
So that's the same thing. We, I mean, we get donations, we just get donations.
We have to be equitable. We have to ensure that we comply with Title Nine.
Correct.
It is a board requirement to make sure that Title Nine is complied with.
Correct. On the, we receive donations throughout the year with, from private organization. At the last board meeting, I said we receive donations from the V F W and a number of organizations. We heard from Cactus Jack, they donate to the district from time to time for different causes. We don't, we're not, we don't have, we're not privy to their books. We don't want to know about their books. That's their deal. We just make sure, do their donations comply with the mission of the district in accordance with donation, there's also a donation policy, so.
Tom, are all of our booster clubs athletic related?
So there is, so there are no registered booster clubs at the district at this point. There is an athletic one that wants to form, and then there's another one in the arts area.
Kathleen? Is the athletic, is it just football or is it all athletics?
I don't know the answer to that yet because they haven't officially formed in our eyes yet. I can tell you from the conversation Mr. Samuelson, Mr. Landry and I had with that, that parent group was to encourage them to be an athletic booster club as opposed to a football booster club. With that said, we can't force them to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. No, I know you know that.
Yeah, no, I was just saying that, okay.
So until they write their constitution and bylaws, they cannot, and present them to us? They cannot exist?
Well, they can exist as a group, but they're not going to be recognized by the district.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Do they have to become a five oh one C three?
I don't know what the nonprofit regulations are as far as what they have to follow. It's not required within the board's policy or regulations, but I don't know what their requirements are. I believe they want to effort that. I can say that. They did make that note to us that they do plan on pursuing that.
So Section C, Number Two states that donations must be accepted by the board or it's designate in accordance with board regulations on gifts, grants, requests, dot, dot, dot. What does that mean?
So the board has policies in other areas of the policy manual on gifts, grants, donations, and bequests. So there are other policies that govern those things in the board's policy manual. So for example, on one of the donate, I don't know if it's under gifts or donations.
But what I'm saying is it's not our responsibility to take in the money and distribute it, right? When a donation comes in, we never know. We don't go on where it goes, right?
If it's over certain amounts, I'm required to inform the board. The board doesn't necessarily get involved. I'm your designate in those matters. It wouldn't necessarily come here to say, oh, do you want to buy forty footballs? That it's not going to get that granular at the board level.
Right. So if it's a drama donation for a drama booster, the person responsible for the drama club would be responsible to determine what that money is given to and what is purchased and...
I think that person would work closely with the high school principal. But I get your point, yes.
And the same with the athletic director then?
Correct. They can make their wish, any booster club can make their wishes and say, we really would like you to buy forty footballs with this. But at the end of the day, the policy and the regulations say it's ultimately the district's decision.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you for that.
Yeah. Welcome.
Chris, before I move to the adjournment motions?
Yeah.
You had something?
I did. I, you know, I guess this is a little interesting. I'd like to see something added to the agenda tonight under new business, which I know, I understand it to be, I have to make a motion and I need two thirds, I need a second, and I need two thirds. But I'd like to add to the agenda so we can have for a talking point because I don't want to see it wait another month about a student out of district doing something in district as an example, if a student that goes to a different school but lives in town wants to participate in something. And I'm doing this, making this motion because I want us to move on this and I don't want us to hold on this for another month. And I'm speaking of what we heard under public comment earlier. I don't want to wait another month. So however that gets us there, I want to get there. So I'm making a motion that I want to add tonight under new business, a topic on discussing a student that is not in district participating in an after-school activity not during the school day. That is my motion.
I second that.
Any questions or comments about that at this point? All in favor?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Amanda. Anyone opposed? Any extensions?
So now that we're discussing this and it's been approved, Tom, I'm looking to you to say, what do you need from us as a board for a student who doesn't go to the Waterford Public School System but lives in the town to participate in an after-school activity? Would that be an insurance waiver? Is that something that we can make another motion for? What is best, what gets us for you that would meet the requirements so a student could participate? And I say I want to fast-track this because I want us to do something that if a kid is going to another school, and we've just spoke about Title Nine, you could have a kid, and you correct me if I'm wrong, you could have a kid that doesn't go to Waterford High, that goes to marine science, that goes to another school that doesn't offer a particular sport but can play that sport here in town. But we don't cover that for something that's not a sport. So help me get us there or I'm looking for your guidance.
So I just want to clarify, I'll answer the overall question. But on the sports, so I think it's important. Sports is already addressed within statute and C I A C regulations on this particular topic. So you have sports and you have non-sports after-school activities. On the sports front, this is already covered statutorily and by C I A C. What that says, and I'm going to paraphrase, that if a magnet or charter school has no sports, that child can participate in their home school district. So for example, we have several magnet high schools in the region. If those magnet high schools in the region offer not a single sport, none, none at all, those kids can participate in our high school sports if they are Waterford residents. If those magnet schools offer even one sport, it could be obscure, it could be curling. Fencing. Curling. I know I say curling because the Paralympian was a, is a, is a, is an Olympic curler. And the child says, well, I really am a baseball or a softball kid. They can't play baseball or softball at Waterford High School because the statutory and C I C language talks about no sports. So I think it's important that there's a distinction between sports and no sports. On the no, and we have policy to reflect the sports end of things. On the non-sports end of things, it would take, really take a policy change on the part of the board. So I would recommend that if this is of interest to the board, that it be remanded to policy and it go through that avenue.
I make the motion to the policy.
Well, I think the chair can just simply say, remand the issue to policy.
Do we have a policy now that says they can't participate in non-sport activities?
So...
What policy is that? I'm sorry.
So that would really, I think, fall under statutes that in order to access education and educational accommodations in a town, you have to be a resident of the town and attend school there. While the people may need... While the per, people may meet one criteria, there is nothing within board policy that would allow it. So you also have, so this goes beyond just, you have charters, you have vo-ags, you have tech, you have home school students, you have magnet students, you have students who attend private school. So you have at least six buckets of students that you're talking about. It is a complex issue, which is why I would recommend remanding it to policy.
So if you, if you contacted our attorney and you asked them to draft a language for this on what they think would be best that can get us there, and once you get that, then if it goes to policy, and I'm hoping, and again, I wanna fast-track this because it's, you know, October now, September, that we can have a policy meeting to move this thing along.
And only because I've been asked this question over several months by board members, I did survey every district from Stonington to Guilford and there is not a single high school who responded. Now, all did not respond. There is not a single high school that responded that they allowed this. It does come with challenges. In our school, for example, to be eligible for after-school activities, you need to be in good standing as far as behavior, i.e. not suspended. You have to be in good academic standing. Where you, if you were absent on a given day, you can't show up at chess club at two thirty. So there are systems and people considerations to make something of this magnitude. You are talking with, about dozens, maybe even over a hundred students who fall into this bucket. This is a sizable issue, which is why I would invite legal counsel probably to the policy meeting to talk to the board about this. And, and I think administration input would be valuable in this discussion as, as it is at every policy meeting.
Absolutely, right, sorry.
Yeah, and I think that's good going forward. I think the situation we heard of tonight is kind of outside that because from what I understood, she was participating and then was told she can't. So where did...
I wouldn't wanna comment on a particular individual student in public, I don't think that would be appropriate. If board members have questions, I'm happy to take their call.
Okay.
I'm also, I'm not in favor of, of fast-tracking anything, but I certainly can see, you know, what, I'm working towards a discussion at the policy committee level with our legal counsel.
As chair of the policy committee, I, I don't understand why this wasn't brought forth to the policy committee before now. I mean, truly, I, I, April was a long time ago. And so I understand the constraints of, and the legalities of it and that it is, it's not just a one-person impact, it's multiple people, even hundreds. But, so I do think the process should go through the policy committee. But I really, you know, the problem with that is we, we don't have another policy meeting until whenever and then it's gotta go to the board after that. So if we can get a policy meeting, get this done with a policy meeting before the next board meeting, I'd be very happy to look into that and then bring it before the, put it on the agenda for the Board of Ed meeting in, in our next Board of Ed meeting.
Absolutely, I, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Kathleen?
Is there a, there, there isn't a drama club at Marine Magnet?
They have clubs and activities.
But they have clubs and activities.
They do, they have a whole list on their website.
So basically what I, from what I understand from other research that I've done in the past is the fact that because they do have clubs and activities in that nature,
But even if they didn't...
but not sports, that the people can go forward to open their own club. Is that correct?
I have no idea what different place schools allow students to do or not do.
If they're interested to do so, they can, because I, I also opened it. But I mean, that's one person, so it's a school.
I, I perhaps maybe should not have used the word "fast-track." Perhaps I should rephrase it to say, "I'm hoping that you would be able to contact the attorney and then give us guidance and have a policy meeting before the next board meeting."
Right.
So then we're not waiting three months, two months.
Right.
And that was my goal by bringing it up tonight, so that we can move this. And I think that we're all in favor of at least getting the right answer and then being able to, at least us as a board have an understanding, do it at policy to then, if we can do it, or do something like this that a kid, and I'm using the sports as an example, that we can do the same thing for the theater and for the arts. That's Michael.
So we are in agreement to move this to the policy committee and we'll get a meeting scheduled as soon as we can.
Prior to the next board meeting?
Right.
Right, right.
I will obviously do our very best, Greg, and I will work on this as early as tomorrow and try to schedule a date and get legal counsel there. I think it's important legal counsel's at the meeting.
Understood, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.